Seconds to start.
And welcome to the March twenty-ninth County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cellphones. Meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender in the White Folder. And Robert is in the front row if you need a listening device. That will go on to routine business. Item number one is a motion to consider the, or to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve, amend and approve the agenda. The amendment is to take out item number fifteen.
Okay, so a motion to remove item fifteen and approve the agenda.
Second, Beth.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve, approve the county commission meeting minutes from March twenty-second, two thousand sixteen.
Make that a motion.
Have a motion?
Second.
Corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be, bills to be paid in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-four cents. Is there a motion?
Pay the bills.
No motion?
Second.
Comments? No comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is Minnehaw County Human Services First Quarter Two Thousand and Sixteen Report. And that is on file at the auditor's report, auditor's office. I believe this is the first time that we've had this specific report. It is also a very good report. If somebody's looking for a short thing to read on human services, it was well put together, so. Item number five is personnel action. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel action. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion, a second. Are there any questions for Carrie? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is application for abatement. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is authorize the county auditor to publish notice to bidders for descendant, des- dissentant.
Decedent.
Decedent, sorry. Transport, transport of Minnehaw County to Minnehaw County Morgue from locations within Minnehaw County inside the city of Sioux Falls. And that is for, to authorize publication.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion.
Second.
A motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is planning and zoning. There are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. DPNO number seven, one, six, seven, six, for the amount of five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and nineteen cents. Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson with the Commission Office. And the Commission Office, as you indicate, has received an application for a compromise of lien for DPNO seven, one, six, seven, six, in the amount of five thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and nineteen cents. The applicant requests a compromise and release in full with no payment. And as you're often interested in these cases, there is no real estate transaction involved in this case. The applicant lists an annual income of fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars, provided a tax return from last year that, that did include a tax refund of just over three thousand dollars. Applicant reports total assets of over a thousand dollars, including household goods and a nineteen ninety-nine vehicle. No debts are reported. She indicates that she has been going through a bankruptcy filing and she has one daughter at home and a second daughter in, in college. And she is asking again for a compromise and release in full. I did have a follow-up conversation with the applicant and again, really just asked if there was a, a pressing need, a reason that, that this needed to be, be dealt with immediately, some type of a real estate transaction or something that would, would necessitate a, a quick resolution. There is not. She just is, is asking for the, the commission's forgiveness of, of this lien. And I said I would be happy to bring that, that forward, but I did, did make it, let her know that payments, however small, on a, on a routine basis would be, would be accepted. But she had, again, elected to bring it, bring it forward for, for your consideration.
Is the applicant present? The applicant is not here. So, Commission, questions for Robert or a motion discussion?
Well.
Commissioner.
One comment. About thirty-five hundred dollars of these liens are public defender charges. I have no idea what they're for, but I, I, I would just encourage her to continue to make payments on this thing and, and there's no pressing need. We're not going to settle, I don't think, at, at one, eleven percent, so. Barring any other conversation, I'll make a motion.
Commission, Commissioner Bender has a comment first.
Well, I just would say that in accordance with past practice, we don't, we don't make any collection efforts at all on these amounts. And there's no pressing requirement right now with respect to this particular matter. So I would just make a motion to deny.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, deny. Any further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have opportunity for public comment. This is a time when you can speak about something that is not on the agenda and we have a presentation from the city. So I will let them come first, identify themselves and give their name and address, so.
Good morning.
Good morning, Sue.
My name is Sue Kwan Beckett and I'm Director of Central Services for the City of Sioux Falls. And I'm here today with Tracy Turbach, our Finance Director, to talk about our city admin building project. Thank you, Robert. So we've been assessing space needs for the city for quite some time now. The first formal study that I know of was completed in two thousand and seven and a second was completed in two thousand and twelve. Both of those studies concentrated on three-to-five-year interim solutions, which included leasing office space, which we have been doing for three years already. One year ago, in April of two thousand and fifteen, we went before the full city council and presented our long-term solution to solve our space needs, which is to build a new building that will be expandable and that will give us enough space to accommodate growth for the next thirty-plus years. As our, as our city continues to prosper and grow and in order to maintain service, service levels, we need additional space for our city staff. You allowed me to come before you in May of last year and I gave you a brief overview then of our building project and timeline. Well, we're right on schedule with what we laid out last year. We have completed schematic design and we have our project budget, which we presented to the full city council on February twenty-third of this year. This is a map that shows you where we plan to build the new building. You see the yellow star there. It is on a city-owned parking lot that we already own. So the land is ours and it fits well into the Dakota Avenue Downtown corridor, which is full of city and county-owned buildings. So as you can see, the, the county buildings to the north, some of our city buildings to the south, extending all the way down to Carnegie Town Hall. This is a architectural rendering of our building. We intend to build the footings and foundation to support a four-story building. The plan is to build three stories initially and we intend to occupy first and second floors with gross, with gross space available on both of those levels. And then the third story initially, we plan to build only as a shell. And it can be built out at any time to accommodate additional staff. And then a fourth floor can also be added when we need it. There will be a basement-level parking garage and each floor will have approximately twenty thousand square feet of office space. So when all four floors are built out, there will be approximately eighty thousand square face, square feet of office space. We also have enough land to the north to build a, a four-story addition, which would give us another twenty thousand square feet. The proposed new building is not intended to simply meet today's space needs. As I said, this building provides a long-term solution that will meet, meet the city's space needs well into the future and eliminate the need for us to lease space altogether. As part of the project, we plan to update Van Epp's Park with new landscaping and walking paths. This will spruce up the area for both city and county employees to enjoy, as well as our downtown residents. Now I'm going to turn it over to Tracy to discuss next steps in our project. Thank you.
Good morning. Tracy Turbach with the City Finance Office. Thank you for, for having us here today. I will say that I have kind of a soft spot in my heart for boards of county commissioners. In a prior life, I, I actually worked for a, a board of county commissioners. So I, I can appreciate the challenges that you folks face. I think it was about a year ago that the city project team on this building project engaged some of the members of the county commission to talk about potential collaboration, whether or not there was some common interest that the city and the county shared in terms of office space needs, looking into the future. And I know we learned that, that the county, of course, had very pressing facility needs that didn't involve necessarily office space. And so it was last summer, I think you folks graciously bowed out of the process, recognizing that, that you had other facility needs that were clearly more pressing to you at that time than, than office space needs. In some very recent discussions with some of our city council members, I know there's, there's a renewed interest in revisiting the possibility of collaborating with the county on office space. And so that's one of the reasons we're here today, to, to bring you up to speed a little bit on, on the project itself and to get your response, if you will, from, to the, the project as it's laid out by Sue and kind of what our, our plans are, to, to seek any input you folks might have on the potential for this project being part of the county's future space needs solution. If you have any thoughts today on when solutions to the county's needs may become clearer to, to us all or thoughts on whether or not you think that the, the, the needs of the county might be, become clear and allow the county's two thousand and seventeen budget to, to begin to address some of those needs. And so that's some of the feedback or input we're, we're looking for. Or perhaps you'll tell us that we're completely off track in, in revisiting this issue and the county is, situation really hasn't changed. And that's really what we're, we're looking for, I guess, is just some guidance and feedback from, from you folks. I will say that in regard to the county and the city collaborating on this particular project, if the city does ultimately choose to move forward as proposed and, and on the timeline we've been talking about, that does not preclude future collaboration with the county. As Sue mentioned, the building is, in a number of ways, expandable. A floor can be added beyond what's initially proposed. The, the initial proposal does include one complete floor that would be simply a shell space that would be available for additional growth for office spaces, as well as the, the addition on the north end of the building that she mentioned. So certainly the city moving ahead on this particular project does not close the door to future collaboration or possibly this project being part of the solution for, for what those future county office space needs might be. In terms of the, the next steps on our project, the, the city council has given first reading to a bond ordinance that was on March first. Second reading and consideration of that bond ordinance is scheduled for April fifth. That's a week from today. And at that time, the council will, will ultimately decide, I, I think, one of two paths. One, do we move ahead as planned, which would mean adoption of the bond ordinance? And then the city would proceed to sell bonds and complete the design and initiate construction within this summer yet. The, the second alternative or second path that, that the council may choose is to pause the project for a period of time for the county to firm up its plans and to allow some more time for that picture to, to become clear to us all. And I think some of the, the possible impacts to the city project could be, if, if, if we do hit the pause button on this and wait some period of time, we may finish out, for example, the third floor. That's a shell that certainly could be finished out as part of this initial project. Another potential option would be to, rather than waiting for some future date to add that fourth floor, to add a fourth floor at the outset of the project, rather than in ten or twenty years or whatever, whatever the case might be. And of course, if that fourth floor was added, that, that as well could be finished out for office space. So essentially, that's where we are today with our project. And I know Sue and I would be happy to entertain any questions you folks have today or provide any additional information we can. Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy. This is public comment and so thank you for coming and giving your presentation. And we'll go over what you have brought to us. Thank you. Is there any other public comment at this time? Okay, is there any other public comment? Then we will go on to routine business. Item number ten is a public hearing to consider drainage permit application number sixteen zero-two from Brian Smith of Smith Farms to conduct agricultural drainage on property, property legal description of Northwest One Half, exception H one, section thirty, Township one oh three, North Range fifty-two West. Kevin Hookman.
Morning. Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. Yes, and this is, as described, a drainage project in section thirty of Clear Lake Township. Right here is the map and it has an old imagery in order to show a little bit of what's downstream, which is McCook County. And that's the reason why it is being presented here today. Any county drainage that has inter-county significance, say drains onto another county or comes in from another county, has to be approved by both county boards, drainage boards. And in this case, that's, that's what's happening. Petitioner plans on putting in both drain tile and ditch, a drainage ditch. I believe I have some images of that. The drainage ditch follows the, the swale that's kind of on the north side here. Right here. And the drain tile is in kind of two parts, more or less along the swale and moving further to the west. And then there's a smaller part on the south side. And the petitioner has submitted, in addition to this map, all the downstream waivers, including a waiver from the township on, I believe it was Montrose Township that received the waiver from them so they can perform work in the right of way because they'll be connecting into an existing drainage line on the other side. Normally, this type of drainage application can be approved in the office because he has met all the requirements of regular drainage. But again, since this is inter-county significance, it has to be heard by the board.
Are there any questions for Kevin at this point?
I do have some pictures too, of the general.
Go ahead.
So this is the, the drainage ditch on kind of the east, looking up. You can see that it must have been dug out years ago before. And this is looking as west from the driveway, kind of the middle of the, the property and that's going to receive most of the drain tile. This is looking east again from the township road where they'll probably be putting the tile through in that area where that little ditch is, that washout. And then this is looking at the downstream property, so that's the images.
Any questions for Kevin at this point? This is a public hearing, so is there anyone who wants to speak in favor of this project? This would be your time. If you'd just identify yourself and your address, please.
Good morning. I'm Brian Smith. You said address?
And address, please.
Four, five, three, six, six, two, Montrose, South Dakota, two hundred and fifty-fourth Street. I didn't have any specific comments. I'm more than happy to answer any questions since I'm the applicant, so.
Okay. Are there any questions for Brian? I don't think so. Thank you, Brian, for identifying yourself. Is there anyone opposed to this? I'm seeing no opposition. Bring it back to the commission. Questions, comments, or motion?
Make a motion to approve.
A motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Have a motion, a second to approve. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
I'm sure I would make one comment, which is I'm, I'm happy that we're taking into consideration the other counties.
That's right. Thank you. And we didn't have any opposition from them, so great. Item number eleven is a public hearing to consider a drainage permit number sixteen dash zero-three from Don Ordall to conduct agricultural drainage on legal property description of West One Half, Northwest One Quarter, section twenty-four, Township one oh four, North Range five, Range fifty-two West. David Heinhold.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Heinhold, Planning Department. You're gonna have to scroll here, scroll through here. Planning and zoning department, we received a drainage permit application to conduct clean out of an, an existing ditch that's on the property that's in section twenty-four of Buffalo Township. It's right there highlighted in red. The two downstream property owners. There's one just to the, to the east directly, which is about eighty acre, about eighty acres. And then there's one to the south of that, that is a half mile downstream from the end of the clean out area. Skipping forward, there's, this is the map that shows what the applicant would like to clean out. The two blue lines are those proposed areas. We'll get to it in a minute. There's some documents that I provided to you that detail this originated. The application originated out of a complaint by the downstream property owners directly to the east of the property. Those, the property owner names are on there. But detailed that the, the applicant was cleaning out a ditch on the property that is mostly the, the blue line that you see that's closest to two forty-seventh street or that, that upper limit of the, the red box area there. I, during the same day, this was back in June, June fifth last year, I went out to the property and visited with the property owner who was out there conducting the drainage work on the property, particularly on the, there's nothing that's been done on the area that's the one to the south of the, the blue line that's closest to two forty-seventh. Visited with the property owner and took pictures and, and got an idea of what's going on and, and a couple of the things. So, and there's other conversations that have been going on between both the applicant and the downstream property owner as far as the, the type, the intensity of the work that's being conducted on this property, the subject property outlined in red, which I've also included that for your review as well in the form of a, a written complaint letter from the downstream property owners that goes through some of the issues that are going on between the two, the property owners about the type of work that is going to be considered. Basically, just some of the things that I've kind of summarized through that is that the downstream property owner does not want the, the drainage way or that existing ditch to be dug out any deeper or wider than, than it currently is or the work that's already been done. And a little bit later than that, just kind of going through, picking up from there. The applicant, he later on in the summer, July thirty-first last year, picked up an application, notification forms that are required by the drainage ordinance for the certified mail return, return receipts for the ditch clean out. We got a call from the downstream property owner a couple of weeks later saying that the, the forms were not signed correctly. So this was the, the original attempt of which the applicant had requested the ditch clean out before this request that we're hearing today. At the same time, the downstream property owner had submitted some photos and these are towards the end, and I've included those in the PowerPoint as well. Just gonna skip forward. This is primarily the work that was done prior to, the original last summer. Just shows some of the photos and the effects of the, what the applicant has done on the property. And this just shows, this is looking towards the fence line. This is right around the area that's between the applicant's property and the downstream property owner to the east. So, and then, so it's just showing views of where, this is back onto the property. This photo right there, as you can see, the rocks in the foreground there. That's right on the fence line.
Which side of the, who's, who's, who's has the rocks and who does not have the rocks?
So currently, the rocks are now, and I'll get to that later, they're on the, the downstream property owner's side. And those are in the photos that are for the current application request. These are from the original complaint that was filed by the downstream property owner.
And they're on Mr. Ordall's side or Mr. Critten?
These you can see in this picture right in front of us is the, the dirt that you can see. That's on the farm side.
That's on Mr. Critten's or Mr. Ordall's side?
Critten's side.
Okay.
This, this property right here, this is the ditch right here. The other side is a pasture.
Ditch.
And then the applicant's side is a farm. Being currently used in crops, so. And scrolling down, this is, again, the same pictures, looking at the farm, the applicant's property, or Don Ordall. And again, this, the picture down in the lower left is that fence line showing the pasture to the left and the farm to the right. And then the ditch runs about midway in the middle. And this just goes through some other pictures. As you can see, this is a little bit more apparent with the pasture right there. This is the farm side.
Who's farm?
The, Don Ordall, the applicant. Showing some of the, which, this is kind of detailed in the photos that are for the current request. The applicant measuring the water. Couldn't quite make out the, the depth of it, but it's somewhere probably between a foot to two foot as far as the amount of water that's piling up on the farm side or Don Ordall's property, the applicant. And these are just some of the same pictures that were submitted. Again, along that fence line and some of the rocks that are located in that area. So there's some ongoing, there's some other issues that are being presented in this case as far as accepting the water and the work that's being completed. And again, this is that same fence line looking there. And then this lower-left corner right here, this is the, the ditch that's been cleaned out. Basically, looks the same except for this area is mostly inundated with water as you'll see with the, the application photos that I took earlier this March.
Madam Chair, David, back at that last picture, the upper right-hand corner, is that the picture showing the shovel upright under the barbed wire?
This one right here. This one right here is the outlet area.
Right. It looks like it's just a pit, though, underneath the barbed wire fence. Where, where, is there a pipe there that is outletting there?
There's no pipe there. It's, it's a, it's a surface drain or it's on, on top of the, it's. So there's no, it'll be more clear in the pictures that I provided with the, the ones I took earlier this March that show that area. These are some of the photos that were provided by the downstream property owner, the Critten's. Just going through, this is kind of an overarching view of the, the farm. As you can see, the pasture is kind of in the distance and then you're looking towards this dirt area right here, which is the primary area of where the, the work has been done already. And then this is showing, again, this fence line looking towards the applicant's property. As you can see, the corn is growing there in the background. This is the farm field on, or, on Ordall's property. Just showing the effects of what's, what's happening because of the, the issues along the fence line. And again, this is the, the outlet area right here of where that water would continue flowing before it would reach the stream as we back up to the. of where that water would continue flowing before it would reach the stream as we back up to the, the map that I provided with the subject property and where this is at, which would continue flowing across the Critten's property through their pasture to get to that intermittent stream. And this is just some more, more of the effects. It's, it's similar to what this is now. This is basically what the pictures look like with the fixtures I took in March. So, some of the same things. And then same photos along that fence line. You can see the barbed wire in the image. And then skipping forward, and that's it for that one. Just getting back to about this time, we sent out, staff sent out a stop work order to Mr. Ordall requesting that no drainage work be conducted. And then this time after that, no, or, we were contact, contacted by the, the applicant or Don, Mr. Ordall's attorney saying that work had been stopped at that time. Which brings me to, the next point is on March third, we received another complaint from the downstream property owners that the applicant had continued digging out the ditch and went out there, went out and inspected the property and found that work has been completed because there's a little bit of dirt showing as far as moving things around. And there were some tractor tires that were, and this is all laid out in the memo provided to you, which indicates that there was some going to the property and moving things around, which, which suggests maybe that some work would be, being done on that. And that was on one of the approaches to the farm on four fifty-ninth Avenue, which is directly west, about southwest of where that ditch clean out was. And going back to the ditch clean out map. This area, so the, the request went out to the property and then on March eighth, Mr. Ordall submitted an application and brought in the certified mail return receipts, the, the white slips and the green cards that we get, the green cards we get in our office that are addressed to the planning and zoning office, as well as paid the five hundred dollar fine for conducting the work without a permit. This hearing is to, no permit has been approved at this point. The applicant is requesting approval for removal of sediment or vegetation from the two blue line segments on this map. However, the, the blue line that is in the area, the green box area right here that I've highlighted on this map is, the applicant provided a wetland map. There is an existing wetland, which some of the pictures that I took, the three pictures at the end, which I, I'll show you a little bit as far as that one, is an area that has traditionally been classified as having other hydro soils and other common vegetation that would be normally seen in a wetland. And I'll just go through some of these pictures. This, so this is looking at the, this gives a more clear picture of the pasture, the grasses down in early, early win, or, early spring. Looking towards the downstream property owner's property is the fence line right there with the barbed wire. The rocks are on the, the downstream property owner's side. As you can see, it may, may or may not be holding the water back. Some water is getting through, but it becomes more apparent as we move through. This is just, again, showing the rocks on the fence line from the, the farm field or the applicant's property where the water flows through right here. And then this is looking back onto the applicant's property, the subject property on the, the ditch that's closest to two forty-seventh street. That area that's plugged with water and backed up on, onto the applicant's, or the subject property.
That's all Ordall land?
Yes, it's.
Madam Chair, nice question. Pulls it right there. So is this the wetland area? And is that fence and pile of rock the same fence and pile of rock we looked at earlier?
This, this area right here is not, is not classified as a wetland. I'll, I'll get to the, the wetland area. In that, that area will be apparent with the, the grasses that are growing.
So then the pile of rock and the fence is the same as the pile of rock and fence we saw earlier?
Yes.
There's no pile of rock and fence at this, at this one?
Behind him it is. He's looking, you're looking up from, away from the fence, right?
This is looking away from the fence. Towards, as you can see the trees here in the background, this is a farmstead that's located directly west of the proposed end of the clean out area.
So if, if the, the fence and pile of rock is behind you as you take this picture?
Yes. This is me looking, I'm standing on the fence line.
And there's, and you're basically standing on rocks. So there's two different areas that have piles of rocks. Okay.
I, I think I was standing on a rock at this point in the middle of where that clean out area was. It was.
Is this the upper or lower on the?
This is the upper one. So the one closest to two forty-seventh street. As, and just moving forward, this is looking, same view, it's just looking more towards the, the farm on the south side of the, the clean out area where the work has been done. And the water is, is, is obviously backing up onto the, the applicant or the subject property. And then this is looking, this is taken from the applicant's property, looking towards the, the trees in the background. This is where the farmstead is for the downstream property owner off in the distance.
Question.
Leave it there for a second. Those piles?
Is there a great big pile of rocks on the other side of the fence in this picture?
Yeah, you can see it.
Yes.
This side. Is there another pile on the other side?
These are the same, this is the same picture as what was shown at the first picture that I shown that shows the plugged area, that the rock, they're not big rocks, they're, they're small rocks. So water is still getting through.
Okay.
Now, hold it right there again though, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yep.
So are those piles of manure waiting to be incorporated? Or are those piles of dirt from some ditch cleaning going on to?
That, I did a little bit of research and it appears that the downstream property owner had applied for a, a clean out of their waterway for the intermittent stream. And so that may be the, the dirt that's just left over from the clean out of that waterway, which is not, it's like less than an eighth of a mile from the end of the clean out area. And this again, walking, basically I just walked towards the, walked along the, the work, the area where the work has been done already. And, and this is just some of those views. Same, same image as the, the one where you're looking west towards the, the farmstead in the background. Looking along the clean out area, the area that's delineated on the applicant's map that they provided. And this is the same thing. The blue lines are what the applicant would like to, to clean out. And again, just walking towards, towards the four fifty-ninth Avenue and documenting, it's, it looks, appears to be about a foot deep. Maybe not even that of where the water level is, but as you move forward, you probably get into about a foot to two foot with the dirt that, it's hard to tell because the dirt's piled up and the amount that's been removed. This kind of gives you a more, a clear picture of where that drainage channel is. This is looking back towards, as you can see the trees there again where the, the downstream property owner lives. Follows the, the same line of where that blue line is, is indicated.
And this is looking east?
This is looking east.
What direction are we looking?
East.
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 So this is basically up at the headwaters of the, of the waterway?
This is getting towards the end of where, or, the start, I should say, the start of where the applicant had conducted the work.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Kelly, I think you can see those piles of dirt or whatever, kind of in the distance.
They're on the Critten's property, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I guess you can still see those dirt piles. This, I was trying to get a view. I, I brought the camera down. Kind of a little angled because I couldn't hold the one straight, but this kind of gives you a view of how deep that is. Again, I mean, you have to step down to get into the area, so probably about two feet deep. In that, this gives you more of an idea of, this is looking west. And the other one, remember the direction on that, that one, that one was looking east. And this gives that clear definition, progressing towards the start of where the work started. Again, that's probably a little bit shallower. There's, there was a deeper part where it had, it looked like it had been cleaned out about at least two, or two feet at max. This area is about a foot, it looks like, just from the appearance of it. And then this is again looking east, dirt piles in the background, I think, and then the trees. Same channel, probably about two feet wide as far as what it's currently there. Again, looking west, same channel. This is just a zoomed in version of that earlier picture. And then, so this is looking from the start of where the work has already been conducted.
Are we on the Ordall farm now?
Yes. This is still the same property, the subject property for Don Ordall, or the applicant. This is the start of where, he's already done the work and proposing to, to clean out sediment and vegetation. So this, and then this is the area, I think we got one more of that, which is again, is zoomed out, backed up a little bit, viewing, there's an area which I've also delineated in the recommendation for this is a prior, or, farmable wetland, which would require the applicant to contact the Natural Resources and Conservation Services to adhere to their guidelines on draining or filling or doing any removals of sediment around wetland areas. He's not doing any work, he doesn't propose to do any work in the wetland as you can see on this map here. Where the arrow is, there's an area, there's that gap between the blue line and the arrow. That's the area that you're looking at right now with the grasses in the foreground right here. Which is probably about ten to fifteen feet in a diameter circle. Which is actually more of a triangular shape on your, your map that you're looking at. This is the area, the, the southern ditch, the end of the clean out area, which as I highlighted on the ditch clean out map in green for the wetland area. As you can see, normally wet area with the, the black dirt there. There's a tree right here. I didn't walk to the tree, but that would be where the, the end of this blue line would be. And this is looking towards that tree, so the line goes straight along the property line. So, along the fence line would be the, the proposed clean out area as indicated by the applicant. This is looking at a, an area towards the east, towards the downstream property owner's property, same direction as the other one, towards the clean out area, or, end of the clean out area. As you can see, there's some grasses in the foreground that indicate that this is primarily a wetland area, that there's vegetation growing, that, and there's hydro soils present. This is looking west towards the area and looking up. There's a, a channel I didn't take pictures of. The area that goes, it runs all the way up to four fifty-ninth basically. And then there's a culvert that goes under four fifty-ninth to the west of this area. The applicant is not requesting to clean that out as indicated by their application. And so that, that kind of goes through, kind of a summary, a long summary of that. As I mentioned, I went out on, on the property on March twenty-first, as you can see with these pictures, and inspected the locations for the ditch clean out and determined that the applicant should not be permitted to conduct drainage work in the area that's highlighted in green or on the attached map or the ditch clean out map. And that the area, staff finds that the surface drain that's closest to two forty-seventh, where the work has already been done, may proceed with removal of vegetation but is not permitted to deepen or widen the channel as indicated on the ditch clean out map. So staff recommends that the Drainage Board approve drainage permit sixteen oh three with the following conditions. That the routine maintenance, and I'm just gonna scroll back to the map really quick here. That the routine maintenance shall not be permitted in the area outlined in green on the, as shown on the ditch clean out map and that the, to, that the existing surface drain closest to two forty-seventh street may proceed with the removal of vegetation or silt to the original depth as well as the original location of the drain is not altered. The applicant is not permitted to deepen or widen the channel from the work already completed and must contact the Natural Resources Conservation Service prior to beginning the work. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions for David at this point, or would you like to hear from the, go ahead, Jean?
I just, I have one question. You made a couple of comments where the work has already been done. And so I'm curious, and I'm talking about the north ditch clean out now. So, the work has already been done and all we're permitting him is to keep the, the current ditch clear of vegetation? Is that really the?
What we're, what we're deciding, what, what I'm recommending, staff is recommending is that the applicant not be, not deepen or widen the channel from what, the work has already been done. Just to remove any, as you can see, there were some corn stalks that maybe, that were floating in that channel. Clean out that, but no, no dirt as far as anything would be removed. So any vegetation that would be causing the water to be held back.
Okay. Commissioner Kelly?
Where, where is the rock pile? No.
No, no. Where on the map is the rock pile?
On the map, right there. Where, where is the rock pile?
Trying to highlight that. So this area right here, I'm drawing a blue box there. It's right here. Draw a bigger.
Is there a rock pile by the other?
On the north end, then of?
It's on the north end.
Of the Ordall property.
Yes.
It's on the Critten's property is the rock pile.
The rocks are on, right now they're on the downstream property owners. Haven't been out to.
The rocks have been piled on the Critten's side of property.
By whom?
By the Critten's.
Um, I mean, both parties are here to discuss the issue. What we're deciding is the applica, approval or denial of the application to clean out.
But, but you say right now, you've used that term several times. Is it gonna change?
Well, I'm just stating, as of right now, when I went out there, the rocks are on that side of the fence.
By saying that, you're indicating that it might change?
I'm not, I'm not saying.
Are they, they are on, okay. There's no right now about it. The rocks are on the Ordall property.
No, the rocks are on the Critten's property. The rocks are all on the Critten's property.
Use your little arrow.
Okay, so that's right.
That's the wrong spot.
So this area where that blue box is?
Yep.
Right there is where the rocks are.
They are on the Critten's property.
Correct.
Yes.
That's all I need to know. Thank you.
So this is a public hearing. I'm wondering if the proponents would like to speak at this time. The proponent, and if you would give your name and your address. And we will give equal time to each side, so you will have an opportunity to speak, they will have an opportunity to speak, and then you can come back and speak again. Just give your name and your address. Good morning, Mr. Ordall.
Two four seven eight one, four fifty-ninth Avenue.
Can you help him with papers? He has a piece of paper to submit.
First, this one, and then the one I please. Oh, okay. The, the small one is the, the western marsh, it's looking east. Quite a ways from the, from the west.
And you, you don't want to put them on the Elmo, or?
Looking to the east, the first picture and the second one is the same.
Turned on, or?
With our new system, if we turn on the Elmo, we, we get out of the, the program we're in and.
We don't want to do that.
Copies might be the best thing to do.
Uh, excuse me, the first picture is the further, further west and then it's moving closer to the east. And the next two are the south part. I took these this past Sunday. On the first photo there, it shows the, this is the south one now toward the dugout. It's moving toward the dugout where, of course, it could go through. If the dugout wasn't there, it would keep going east. But it's forced to go north and then go east.
Donnie, I just looked at the pictures. The others haven't all seen them, but I see the piles of dirt on your neighbor's property in the distance. So, is that dirt from digging out their, their ditch?
It is.
Thank you.
A more photos here of. This would be the last falls photo of the southern more, where it crosses the fence. This would be the last falls photo of the southern more, where it crosses the fence line on the south.
Need to speak a little louder, too.
This wouldn't, would be where the waterway, where the water crosses the fence line by the dugout.
Okay. And the dugout is the south one that's in the green.
Another picture.
South one, where they've got.
Yep, this one, the one that's in the green, so this picture's from the south of the green.
Actually, I have some additional, additional photo on the south one here, no, excuse me, that's the north one. Uh, on the north one, the culverts were removed, that's why it looks like there's more excavation, if you will, on the north one. I took the culverts out, we're full of dirt. I had an excavator come in and remove them, and he had to get alongside each culvert to save the, save the pipe, so that's why it seems like it's a larger, if you can envision what I'm saying. There's another one, that's a really good, clear photo.
Mr. Ordol, I just have a question, this picture that I'm looking at, this is the one with the culverts are laying in the background, was the culvert going underneath the fence line at some point?
Yeah.
Okay.
Here's another one also.
That looks like it, I mean, I can see the culverts in the background, I can see the ditch where the culvert was.
It, we had some, my son did some surveying of it, and he's been in this business before, and it seems like the waters.
Yep, you're gonna have to talk.
The water on the, there we go, we're getting it better now. I haven't done this too much. On the south one, because of the fact the cul, the dugout is there, then it forces the water to go north, and it has been doing, doing this since the dugout's been put there. A lot of them were put in the sixties, I don't have a time when they would have done that. And then it lets it go east, but then there again, there's just a few rocks in that fence. Just a little history, by the way, my great grandfather did homestead, preempt and reclaim this property. And due to a death in the family, it was sold out of the family in nineteen forty nine. I got a chance to rent it in nineteen eighty, and it came up for auction a year and a half ago. I had farmed it thirty five years, it came up for auction a year and a half ago. And I got, by golly, being having that kind of history in it, I thought I should own it. And so that happened, and any other folks here that didn't get the bid, that's the way it is. They were baiting against me here, so I guess that's the way this rolls, so. I gotta, I gotta run along here that had a few comments on the fact of doing this here, if he wants to make a few.
Are there any questions for Mr. Ordol at this point? Okay, is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor of this project?
Talk a little better, Pat, or no, you wanna say a couple of words about it, or not necessarily?
And if he wants to, there's an opportunity at the end, so.
So.
Additional questions at this point, thanks, Robert.
Just a comment, that I guess, that if the dugout wasn't there, I wouldn't have issue, be facing this issue here, and so I gotta deal with that. It would probably, I'm guessing it was all farmland at one time, before my time, the dugout changed it. So.
If there's no one else to speak from the proponents, we'll let the opponents speak at this point, thank you, Mr. Ordol. You may, you'll have an opportunity at the end to comment again. And again, you just.
Madam Chair, Robert, there were a bunch more pictures passed.
Got them right here, sorry. If you wanna just.
John Marsha Crittenon. We started out with this.
Give your address, sorry, excuse me.
Five nine forty three, two hundred forty seventh street, Colton.
Go ahead.
Do you want, or do you want pictures?
You have to ask staff, she's got a CD, or do you want pictures?
Okay.
There's a bunch of pictures.
Are they identified on the back or anything?
This is the middle hole by the cottonwood. You just wanna go as we go, or?
Sure.
Yeah, if you want to.
Okay, yep.
This hole was dug in twenty fourteen.
This hole I'm looking at here with the shovel under it?
Yep.
The creek, the creek that you've seen with the dirt piles, that was dug out in twenty twelve.
Ours.
Ours, on our side. And our, we talked, Donnie come over to talk to us, and.
Can David help him with that, no, no, can he help him by maybe pointing out on the map here where they're talking about?
Oh, okay, okay, well.
Oh, you've got the mouse.
Okay, where that creek is with the dirt piles, we dug that out in twenty twelve. And Donnie come over to see, to, we talked about, you know, releasing some of the water off of his property, and I said that I did not want to mess around with the waterways, but to tile it. And that was the understanding, he brought a permit over, and that's the understanding of that, we was gonna tile it. And anyway, apparently, he didn't like that idea, so the pictures, you got the picture?
Yep, they weren't.
Those pictures with the tile spade, he dug a hole next to that cottonwood where that green is. There's a, there's an old cottonwood there, he dug a big hole there, and how we found it out about it, is our calves are running underneath the fence.
Neighbor called to tell us our calves were out.
So, but anyway, we got that fixed, filled it full of dirt. Anyway, he started digging on that north waterway where the blue is. And we got pictures of that, too, when he started, we, we actually took some pictures before he even started. But the one with the tile spade is the one, then we filled it back in, so it was level. Then he started, he started digging on the, where the blue is, and he had no permit, and we've told him multiple times. And, well, June first is when he come down where the green is, where that green arrow is, where the wetland is, and he took his chisel plow through there, and took the dirt scraper and scraped dirt out of there. And then June second to the fourth, he was digging on that north one. And then June fifth, I was off, so I called planting and zoning. And when I went down there, you seen that rock pile that, we were talking about that rock pile? He dug that out of there, right next to the fence line.
He initially had rocks on his side of the fence as well.
That big pile of rocks, that was his. We, we actually put rock on our side, 'cause we figured we were gonna get washed out, 'cause we didn't want that waterway to get washed out. 'Cause whoever farms it after us, they might want to till it up, they might want to have it for hay, hay ground, or they might want it for pasture, I don't know, but we don't want a big drainage ditch through there. So that's why we initially said to tile it.
Tell me about the rocks again now, David, can you get, is there an arrow on that thing so we can see? The rocks are on the north waterway, is that correct?
Yep, on the north waterway.
And they're on your property?
No, the big pile of rock was his, we had a little pile there just to get the four wheeler across there.
So how, so how did the big ones get over there, or is there not?
The Ordol put them there.
He put the rocks on your property?
No.
They were on his side, there was rock on both sides.
Here's probably a better view of the two sides with the rocks.
That one, he pushed the rock out.
These rocks here on his property used to be along the fence line, to slow the water down, but then he pushed them out of the way, so they're.
Right after we got talking to planting and zoning. So anyway, then, then Saturday, or Saturday, it was June sixth, he pushed them rock out. Well, anyway, then he wanted a complaint, Donnie wanted to complain to David about the. So anyway, then we got a lawyer, or Donnie got a lawyer, and he sent to us to remove the dirt and the rock. And the rock that we had on our side was just enough to get a four wheeler across, real ATV.
We still have to maintain our fence.
The rocks. You'll see when you get these pictures, but the rocks that are on Donnie's side, were they in that field, or did they get? So they just pulled them out of the field and piled them up there?
The day we went down to planting.
It makes sense when you look at these, I think.
I don't know where he got them from either. Am I messing everybody up?
No, no, you're not, I mean, it'll help when they look at these pictures, I think. I mean, it helps for me now to understand where the rocks are.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question? So, the original thought of putting the tile in, was that tile gonna go across your land to the stream?
That was, that was gonna go, we didn't want him to go over the top, we wanted him to go through it.
So were you gonna put in a solid pipe or a perforated?
Solid pipe.
Solid pipe.
We were told it had to be a solid pipe through a pasture.
When we, when we had the pasture dug out, we also did some tiling, because along our grain bands, it was all wet up there. Well, then we had another wet ground, which Donnie's area had cattails in it, on the, where in the north one, had cattails, so I surmised that was a wetland, too, but I wasn't sure. But we had to, we had to have our soil tested before we could do any digging.
So you had NRCS out there? Or, or Brian Top or somebody?
And these are the permits that we received from Donnie, we received this one first, with just the plain envelope, it wasn't certified. And we had to have our complaint in by July twenty first, and this was mailed out on July twenty first. So I took this to David, Donnie went back down to do a second one, which was certified, but was not signed. So we still don't have any permits for dumping water.
By that time, that trench is already dug.
Yeah, this all started in June, and we got this July twenty first.
Well, then the digging stopped there, and then, well, October eighteenth, we got a lawyer from, or, Donnie sent his lawyer for a complaint about the waterway, to remove the rock, and remove that dirt that we put in that he dug out.
He dug?
The hole that he had dug, that first south one, or in the middle there, that one was dug, but it was deep enough that it, the calves were running underneath the fence, and we filled that all back in up to the, where existing the rest of the dirt. So, and then, November seventh, between seventh and eleventh, I don't know, he started digging rock. And here's a picture of the field where, that's, that would be, that would be the south one, and that's that wetland. And there's a rock pile by the stock dam.
Carol, you wanna bring the south pictures around, just, that's, this is, this, we just finished all the north stuff, now this is the south one.
We're going to the south one now.
Madam Chair, I really think we have too many pictures that we're not able to look at.
Well, this one you really need to see, because he did property damage.
I, I think.
One project first.
I think that we should look at getting all of these things on a disc and have this presentation again, where we can look at it more carefully, because the way it is right now, it's too helter-skelter.
I would agree, and the other thing is, is that I think there's gotta be some solutions to this, without just giving us two ideas here, I can, I mean, I think I can see several solutions to fixing this problem on both sides. And I just feel like this has kind of been a mess.
It is a mess.
Thoughts from your perspective?
Well, I would agree, I mean, I, I have no, I, I'm trying hard to follow what's going on here, and I don't have any confidence that I'm, I'm following, so, and it does seem to me like.
Folks, I believe.
All possible, this would be a situation where it'd be better worked out between the neighbors, if.
I believe we're all working hard here, but I, I think that deferring for a week to.
I think you better give more than a week.
Well, I would like, at least to give staff a week to get these pictures on a disc, and allow me to go for ride other.
They can be on our screen, the question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Kelly.
The rocks confuse me, the, the smaller rocks are on your property.
We, we put enough just there for a four wheeler to cross.
And you put those there, not, not Ordol's.
No, we put them there so we, we didn't think out of sight.
You use it as a bridge for their ATV, okay. And then the rocks that are on his property seem to be scattered, is that correct?
That's, that's 'cause he pushed them out of the way, so.
So the water would run.
But they're on his property?
Yes.
And have they been there like forever?
No.
He added them, he added them when they started digging that ditch.
In between June second to the fourth. We're, we're both at work, so we don't know what's going on out in the field.
Commissioner Kelly, I, I think it would be in the best interest to send this back to staff, and this needs to be deferred. I don't know if we want to just send it back to staff and make them reschedule us, or if you want to set a timeframe for deferring this. This has gotten way too confusing, and we want to do it right.
Madam Chair, would you have a recommended length of deferral?
I would ask, excuse me, Scott, how many weeks do we need before we can bring this back?
At least two, but you, you, you can continue it right now.
We don't feel like we're comfortable with what's going on to continue it, we would like to defer it.
Uh, just, I would say then a month.
Commissioner Kelly?
I'd like to send it back to staff.
I agree, that's what we're talking about, it's going to staff.
Okay, as opposed to just saying a deferral day, but, and then the staff is gonna have to sit down with the two parties and figure out what pictures are we gonna show, so we only got maybe a half dozen or dozen pictures, not.
I would like the presentation broken down, too, so that we talk first only about the north drainage way. Let's get through that north drainage way, then, after we finish that, then we talk about the south one, so that we're not trying to flip back and forth in pictures and figure out. This will give us an opportunity to drive out there, too, if we want to, so we can get a better visual in our heads of what we're talking about.
Yeah, well, we have to have both people present, so we'll have to see how that works.
Madam Chair, I think a month is a, is a long time, I mean, we are entering a more busy time.
Planting season's coming up.
Planting season's coming in.
Oh, plant it.
We, on that, where the green is, we'd like to put a fence back in there, but he dug underneath the fence. So how do we, does he put the dirt back in, we don't want no lawsuit, we just want it fixed.
I think, I think we have plenty of things to figure out.
Is there a motion on the table?
I want to give, I want to give Mr. Ordol a chance to respond, because he does get one, so, just that we're doing this. So, just, Mr. Ordol, if you have any comments, but we are going to have a motion here in a second to defer this. This is a public hearing, and I think he needs to have the opportunity at least to say something, that we're planning to defer this, Mr. Ordol, and that's all I want, if you've got any comments about that before we have a motion in a second on this.
A couple more pictures.
We're gonna wait with pictures, no more pictures, we're done, because it's way too confusing. So, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to let you know we're deferring this.
Okay, well, I do recall there was some discussion about a pipe across there, and if there's, if that's an issue, I'm sure, be happy to put a pipe in.
I think we can figure this out with staff.
Okay.
I think two weeks, Madam Chair.
I have a motion.
Motion for two weeks.
I second.
I have a motion and a second to defer for two weeks, this is to go back to the staff and try to work this out in a better.
Better graphics, better pictures.
And maybe a solution.
A little more organized.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye, aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number twelve is authorize the chairman to sign the nursing service agreement between Minnehaw County and the Volunteers of Ma, of America. Jamie Gravitt, good morning, Jamie.
Good morning, Jamie Gravitt, Director of the Juvenile Detention Center. With Volunteers of America backing out of direct care of juveniles, we still had a contract that was coming due for our nursing services at the Juvenile Detention Center. Volunteers of America currently has a nurse that comes to our facility Monday through Friday for four hours a day to meet the medical needs of our juveniles that are held in custody. We'd like to continue that contract, I've provided copies of it to you, the rates remain the same, it's budgeted for. I'd ask for your authorization for the chairman to sign the contract.
Motion to authorize the chair to sign this contract.
Is it, I have a motion, is there a second? I second it.
Is there a comment, Commissioner Kelly?
Well, more of a question, how many people are housed down there right now?
We have seventeen currently.
And the nurse comes five days a week for four hours?
Correct, and then there's on-call services provided by them outside of those hours, so if there's ever an issue, we contact them. If there's specific issues with restraint type situations, they're contacted as well.
Um, I guess it just seems four hours a day for five days a week for seventeen people, it's... Is this a high-risk crowd as far as illnesses or something, or what?
Is it the law, Jamie?
Uh, most kids that come into our facility have not been, uh, taken care of medically. Uh, a lot of times she's doing initial assessment, she's making sure that we're meeting requirements for physicals. She's, uh, handling all approval of medications of kids that come in, trying to get them back on the medications that they were on and may have not been taking while outside in the, in the real world. Um, it's, it's a lot of catch-up and, and getting kids back on track medically, so there, we, we keep her busy for those four hours a day.
And then when they get out, they go back to their homes?
We, we have no control over that unfortunately.
And a motion and a second to approve the contract, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously, thank you, Jamie. Item number three is consider a bid award for Project MC 102-104-105-OL-2016. 2016 contract overlay on thirteen miles of County Road 102, 104, 109. Bids opened on March 23rd. Good morning, DJ.
Good morning, Commissioners, DJ Booth, Highway Superintendent. Uh, was planning on using the elbow, Elmo to show you a chart, uh, but the Elmo was down, and so I had Shannon pass out a couple copies. Uh, that is our Minnehaha County pavement preservation cost, uh, history, uh, goes back to 2002 for chip seal overlay, and also, uh, the revenues we show on there. But that's going to accompany some of the conversation here. Uh, real briefly, we had our bid opening last week, uh, for the chip seal project, and, uh, I think mostly due to the oil prices, uh, the bidding market was extremely good to us. Uh, we received seven bids, and, uh, our bid estimate, which was pretty, uh, pretty aggressive, I guess, to say the least, was 1.6 million dollars, the low bid was 1,356,380.94, which is an extremely good bid, uh, we've, uh, reviewed those and are recommending that, uh, the commission awards that and enters into contract. Uh, in addition to that information, uh, the, the second page of your, your bid packet, or your, uh, briefing packet there shows the map of, uh, where this project is up east of Dell Rapids. And, uh, with the good bids that we've received, assuming that we do get an award here, uh, we are going to be investigating the opportunity to extend the, uh, the unit quantities on this contract and do a little bit of extra mileage. And that's why I wanted to give you a copy of that, uh, that table. Uh, the table shows, uh, what our costs have been, uh, over the last, uh, several years, uh, fourteen years for the chip seal, uh, which is the blue line on that chart, you can see that it's been pretty consistent, but, uh, or I'm sorry, uh, the overlay. Uh, the overlay is a red line, and you can see that the overlay has been pretty volatile, uh, the last few years. And, and this year is, uh, a really extremely good price at, uh, about 115,900 dollars per mile. And, uh, we haven't had that good of a price since, uh, since really 2008 was the last time that we had a better price than this. And, uh, if we're able to extend, uh, the project based off of 2008 prices, I think we should really take advantage of that. Uh, but we will be coming forward, if we can negotiate something out with a contractor, uh, we'll be coming forward with a proposed change order for review and approval. Other than that, uh, we'd like your, uh, approval of a contract for the bid award at this time.
Any questions, Commissioner Bender?
So, DJ, just to help me understand better what it is that you're warning us that you're getting ready to do, are you suggesting that you're going to take this, this stretch that you've got highlighted in blue here that is for this bid award and extend it? Or that you're going to look at other, um, areas that you have in your plan to, to do overlays on and see if we do them early?
So I, I pulled up the map there just so everybody's not in the dark of what we're talking about there. Uh, the blue shaded roadway is the current project as it was bid and as we're wanting to award. And the section that we would, would like to, um, extend through a change order... Uh, right under the mouse right there is County Highway 113, and that section from the county line, uh, which is Highway 104 uh, south to County Highway 114, there's a six-mile stretch of roadway right there, ends up being probably around six and a half miles with where it curves around to the, back to the west. Uh, but that section of roadway is what we've targeted, just because it's in the same area, the trucks, uh, the haul route will basically be, um, the same distances or close to the same distance to where the existing project is, and that plays a big part to the cost of the actual project. Uh, if we said we would like to add that unit price and do something way on the southwest part of the county, the contractor would say no way. Uh, haul prices are way too high, so, um, the first step is to do the bid award, but I just wanted to give the commission a heads up because the prices are so great, and we haven't seen prices like this for close to ten years, uh, or eight years. Uh, we want to, uh, look at a second, uh, phase, if you want to call it, to this project by extending the quantities in, in the same area of the existing project.
Okay, additional questions? DJ, oh, go ahead.
No, I, I was just going to make a motion.
I do...
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the project, um, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. My comment would be that is there a possibility of another stretch of road in our funding that we could bid another one yet with that type of... And get some type of response like that, or is that just too wiffy now, the...
Going through another bid, bid process right now, I'm sure won't get the same, uh, bid prices. Uh, we were pretty lucky, the oil prices were at a really low point when this went out for bid, and they've already come up again. And, and actually, I was talking to the oil supplier last week, and he said that trying to add this is kind of going to be hit and miss just based off of how much oil prices have gone up since, uh, since the bid opening, and, and it's a really volatile market. And, and then also, uh, the contractor is a, a regional contractor that will set up a mobile plant at LG Everest, which is on the west end of this project, and, uh, that is another reason why it's so cheap for us. And they're, and the mobilization on this project is really high, and that's because they're setting up a mobile plant. And for us to, uh, bid another project in a different part of the county, they would have to probably compete with higher oil prices and setting up a mobile plant somewhere else.
Okay, thank you.
I, I told the, uh, one of the contractors that was at our conference last week what their unit price was for asphalt on this project, and his jaw about hit the floor. So...
Yeah, it was pretty nice to look at, so...
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, item number 14 is consider a motion to authorize the use of personnel savings in the Air National Guard for operational expenses in the air guard budget. Good morning.
Good morning. Keith Winia, the Air Guard Division Supervisor, um, requesting commission's approval for the, uh, use of personnel savings in the air guard budget for operational expenses in the air guard budget. We currently have a projected overage in personal savings of roughly 20, $26,000. So, and that'll probably go, they'll go to equipment, training, and all that for our officers, so... Is there any questions?
Any additional questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion, I have a motion and a second to approve, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Item number 16 is consider a motion to declare as surplus property for disposal of out-of-service commission meeting room audio and visual, and video equipment.
Good morning, Commissioners, Robert Wilson again with the Commission Office. As you know, we've recently upgraded and replaced the audio and video recording and broadcasting system that we use and that we transmit our system over, signal over to CityLink for broadcast on. And, uh, the items that we replaced, that, that system was first installed, I believe it was in 1998, and there was an update in 2003 or 2004. Uh, as old as that older equipment was, it was still listed on our capital assets. And we are looking for you to, um, dispose, uh, surplus, uh, surplus those for, uh, for disposal purposes, and that will allow us to get rid of them and, uh, get, uh, clear out some of our, our storage areas that we've, uh, they've just been, been sitting in for the last couple, a couple of months. I called around, um, I, I don't think there's any value in the, the older pieces at this point. You, you'll recall that one of the reasons we replaced this system is that we, uh, we were unable to find replacement parts when, when individual items started failing, uh, on the last one, and that was really the, the last straw that, um, prompted us to bring this, uh, new consideration of the new system forward. So I will, uh, bring this forward to, to you for, um, um, consider, um, uh, declaring the, uh, property, old property as surplus for the purpose of disposal.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to declare that audiovisual equipment surplus.
A motion and a second.
I will second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 17 is liaison reports, are there any reports?
We had planting and zoning last night, uh, a number of things were approved, um, a couple were not, and they may come to us.
Okay, any new business? New business?
New business, Madam Chair, if I may?
Commissioner Bur.
You know, uh, we had some snow this weekend, and, uh, on, around the county, the depth of the snow varied considerably. I made a tour, uh, to the west and to the north and back to the east and home yesterday. It was a beautiful day to be out driving around our county, I didn't know about drainage issues, or I could have looked in. But, uh, anyway, uh, I know in Colton, they had considerably more snow than we did in Sioux Falls, and yet on Saturday night, the roads were not cleared. Sunday morning, it was ice and, uh, it was difficult for people to get to Sunday services. And, uh, I think we need to review our policies for, for those nights. I know we give extra credit, so to speak, to our, our highway workers who have to work during these conditions, but that's just the facts, and I, as a telephone guy, used to go and work in, in those conditions. Our citizens maybe are getting a little bit spoiled, and maybe their expectations are greater than they were, uh, 25 years ago, but, uh, uh, we have the resources and we should clear those roads, in my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner Bur, any other new business? Robert?
Robert Wilson again with the Commission Office, just wanted to brief you real quickly on one item. We've recently been contacted by Mary Johns, the Director of the Suline Libraries. And, uh, you have one appointed position on the Library Board of Trustees. Jed Huesman, uh, serves that role at this point, and he, his term will be, uh, coming up in, in May. And we, just looking for some input from you, oftentimes, when we have board openings, um, that we'll put out a press release with a, with a call for applicants, um, he, uh, Mr. Huesman is eligible to serve another term. Uh, he has not indicated that he's unhappy or unwilling, uh, to, to serve again in, in any way whatsoever. Um, but we just wanted to bring that to your attention, sometimes we put these, uh, put out a press release, a call for applicants. Um, I believe the, um, uh, Mary Johns has, uh, the name of another, um, potentially interested individual, and, and really just wanted to put it forward for your consideration of how you would, would, would want to handle it, if you would put it out for a, uh, want us to issue a, a press release and, and make it known that we have a, a position coming up, understanding that you, you do have somebody who's, um, in that position, um, who is eligible for another term as well.
Thoughts?
Madam Chair, I know Jed, and he's a good guy, and, uh, I actually have seen him at the library when he wasn't at a meeting, and, uh, I would, I think he'd be a great guy to keep on in that position.
I served on, I was, had the pleasure of serving on the library, um, board last, uh, term, and he was one of the very faithful members that showed up regularly and has a passion for, um, the public library system, and so I would also support keeping him on if he's interested.
Okay, make it so. Thank you. Is there any old business? With that, I'd look for a motion to adjourn into executive session for personnel.
It's my motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.